Good evening. It is now 6:32 on Monday, May the 23rd, 2022, and I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones and rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Present.
Mr. Smith? Dr. Johnson?
Present.
As we work through our agenda, I'd like to remind our listening audience that all of our work that we do follows the SMART, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive goals, and have been established within the district to include student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. Our first item on the agenda is 2.01, which is District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Madam President and Board, I'd like to have Mr. Holman come up. So the 3rd and 4th graders are published authors, and they wrote several books. If I Had a Superpower, Show Kindness, Santa's Secret Spy, If I Discovered a New Planet, If My Classroom Was Made of Candy. And I saw people out in the audience when I said, "If my classroom was made of candy," they liked that book. But Mr. Alex Downs, Ms. April Johnson, Ms. Claire Kramer, Mr. Brian Matthews, Mr. Troy Pratt, teachers, Ms. Jessica Can, media assistant, congratulations to the 132 students in the 3rd and 4th grades who authored and published the following books that I just mentioned. So the Board would like to commend the students for their creativity and the staff for facilitating this noble endeavor. So, Mr. Holman, you want to talk a little bit about the... how it came to be?
Sure. The...again, Ms. McCann was in charge of the project, and she basically had them write a page in a book, and the book was published. So, you know, we have some more students that are here. Come on in, there's some seats over here. And it's just an exciting thing for 3rd and 4th graders to be a part of, and to say that, you know, at that young age, you're a published author. So, we wanted to just recognize them and say, "Thanks for being here."
Okay. So, Ms. McCann? You want to come up? Yes? This is your moment. What inspired you to do it? And give me a little idea of how the kids participated.
Um, well, as a kid, I had a reading comprehension problem. And so, being a library, that's my main goal for these kids, is to teach comprehension. And Student Treasurers Publishing came across my email, so I checked them out, and they...I went ahead and asked them to send me some kits. And each student, I gave them a title for the book, and we used, um...what are they called? We used things to come up with ideas for them, for the story, and they wrote, and they rewrote and rewrote. I mean, we did so many rough drafts, it was crazy. But after that, then we drew pictures, and then they finally did their final draft and their picture, and then we put it all together, and I sent it off, and they published it. And these books will be entered into a national challenge.
That's pretty awesome. That's absolutely incredible. So, one of the things that we always do is we have a backup plan for the backup of the backup of the backup. And so, our backup plan would be to showcase these young people with convocation. So they'll get us...they'll still get an opportunity to still be showcased the beginning of school, kicking off the school year. But I'd like to recognize the young people that are here tonight. They're really incredible.
Absolutely.
So, who's here tonight?
Kevin.
Kevin.
And then I have our...oh, here's yours, Kevin. And then I've got our other three over here. You guys can come on up.
So, do you have names?
Mr. Smith, I have 500 kids.
I'm just...
It's embarrassing.
Okay, so what they can do...
Why don't you guys say your names to everybody?
Yeah, but we have certificates for everyone.
Dominic.
Dominic, what's your last name?
Augustine.
Okay, so Dominic Augustine.
So I signed 150 of these, so you're taking these today. No matter what you think, you're getting that certificate.
First and last name?
Helen Powell.
Helen Powell. Next? Did you get that? Very good. So these are four of my 132 students.
So, as a bonus, sometimes we have to kind of make people understand what you sacrificed and what you didn't. So, Ms. Jordan, if you get the kids' names and get their addresses, we're going to send them some gift cards just for being here tonight to some of the local restaurants. So, yeah, there we go. So tell your people what they missed. There we go. So I had a very special...like, if one kid came, it was going to be a trip for his family to Disney World, but more kids came, so I couldn't do that with him. Yeah, it was going to be. So, Ms. Jordan, get their names, give them the certificates, and we are really excited that you guys... But I want you guys to get a picture. So, did you come by yourself, or you brought family members? Who brought you here? All right, bring Mom up.
Come on, Mom.
Mom, all of my letters say, "Be ready for the photograph." I know, they all say it.
You guys are fine.
That's okay.
Yes, it's cool. You guys are...
Mom's like, "I don't want to be in the photo."
Yes, yes, just stand behind.
Yeah.
I like that. Strategically place my child in front of me.
Yes, that's very smart.
That's a good idea.
That'll be good.
You guys are the chosen four out of 132.
Selection, selected.
Selected, yes, yes. Show up right here, that's right. Absolutely. That's right, absolutely.
Oh, can you see behind him? Say, Dominique? You got this.
A challenge.
Well, we're going to try to do that honoring at another time. We always get it. Ms. Jordan, can you get their names and addresses so we can send them something special?
Thank you so much.
Doc?
All right, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and congratulations, and thank you to all the students, teachers, and administrators for your dedication and sacrifice to the district. And I do believe that I speak for the entire Board when I say that we are very proud of these accomplishments of these 3rd and 4th grade students having worked together to create a masterpiece, basically. Something that you will remember for the rest of your life, that you wrote a book in the 3rd grade. And I hate to say, "My mama said," but anyway. A reader today is a leader tomorrow. So then that's really the truth. And she was very strict with us, reading a minimum of 20 minutes to a half hour every day. You had to read something if it was a comic book, whatever, you had to read something. So, just keep working on it. And you've already started the biggest part of it, having written your first...published your first, you know, novel in the 3rd grade. So, that's fantastic. So, I do believe I speak for all of my Board members to say that we're very proud of you. So, our next item on the agenda is our recess, and so you're welcome to stay and remain with us for the rest of our meeting, but we're going to take a five-minute recess at this time. We now resume our regular Board meeting, and our next item on the agenda is 4.01, Public Comments. And I don't have a sheet for any public comments, so we're going to move on to 5.01, which is the comments from the Board...to the Board from the associations. The Winton Woods Teachers Association representative, do we have someone here tonight? I do not see anyone. Okay, so we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is 5.02, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OPSI. Do we have a representative from OPSI? Can you state your name for me so that I could put it in my record?
Stephanie Johnson.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Good evening, Madam Board, President, and Board Members, and Superintendent Smith. I am Stephanie Johnson, a dedicated OAPSE member, here tonight on behalf of our OAPS President, Sandra Ferguson Gordon, who became sick today and couldn't be here before you tonight. It is my honor to represent OAPSE and our members before you. The OAPSE family would like to wish all of our Winton Woods staff and students a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, we appreciate your presence at our meeting today.
Ms. Johnson, your president usually brings us snacks. Did she tell you that? Okay.
That's okay. We still appreciate your presence.
We sure do. All right, as my stomach growls, we appreciate you.
Yes, thank you so much.
I know you were going to say it, Dr. Johnson, I just beat you to it.
Did you beat me to it? I still have some left from last time.
Dr. Johnson was not...
Yeah, I was not going to say that. All right, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, the Approval of Minutes as Presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to the minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurers' Report of the Financial Statements for April 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, you have before you the financial statements through April of 2022. The year-to-date revenues for the general fund are at $46.9 million, with $3.3 million being received during the month of April, which was mostly our homestead and rollback from the State of Ohio and state foundation support. The total expenditures for the year-to-date were at $42.1 million, and we're currently running approximately 5.6% under our budget, or approximately $3.1 million. And then finally, the last report is a list of all those fund balances as of the end of April, and they're all provided there for you. And unless you have any questions, that would be a summary of the statements that I provided.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of April 2022 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, the Treasurers' Recommendation for Investments for April 2022. Back to you, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, as of April 31st, the district had investments yielding $15,319 for the month of April. Of that, $13,300 was for general fund, and $2,000 still was received into our building funds balance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order to approve the investment report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, which is the Five-Year Forecast for May 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
As you know, the May is just an update for the year and just providing any major changes from the actual forecast, which we develop each November. One of the things that we were able to find... I was able to provide you a little better information on the Five-Year Forecast is we did finally finalize the CUP Patterson Funding Formula. So, the actual revenue minus...still a few little adjustments in post-open enrollment is still to come. But for the most part, we do know where we stand on CUP Patterson Funding for this year and for next year. So that has now been included in the Five-Year Forecast. The phase-in for the Five-Year Forecast is approximately $1.6 million. And as you even recall, hearing from Representative Miranda, do the fund...as we all know, the Bynum budgets, only two years. So, across the state, most institutions that get state funding, especially K-12 schools, which CUP Patterson affects, have only been advised to account on those funds for two years, which would mean this year and next year. And then we have to wait to see if the legislature upholds the CUP Patterson Funding Formula. So that's been included...the two years have been included in the Five-Year Forecast, holding it constant for the remaining years. Also, the real estate taxes are up slightly by about approximately $500,000, but that's not an increase in revenue. Starting next year, we had several tax incremental financing programs with Forest Hills...Forest Park, my apologies. Forest Hills is on my mind because it's crazy out there. But anyway, we have some expiring. And what happens when those expire? They...Forest Park holds us harmless, and it comes to us directly from Forest Park. When those tax incremental programs expire, it comes through us through real estate taxes. So, most of all of them are expiring at the end of the year. So, those funds have been re-put under...instead of other revenues, they're now under real estate taxes. For the expenditures, there's no raises included. We have...we're in the midst of negotiations. However, increments are in there. The step increases for employees as they advance. Under benefits, I have...still have projected 7%, but we're a little nervous about 7% because we were...at our last consortium meeting, we were told that we could be running 10% to 11%. But we won't know that for sure until around August or September. But just to let the Board be aware, each percent increase in healthcare costs the Board of Education $50,000. Also, our purchase services. I tried to go back to pre-pandemic. I worked with Mr. Denny. We, as you know, special ed services are increasing. We have energy and utilities out of purchase services. They're on the rise. And of course, Scarlet and Gray are our major purchase services. So we've...I've tried to have a better handle on that when we come back in the fall, but I've tried to incorporate any of those anticipated increases right now. Some of our...Steve, isn't it? Our supplies have been...we've signed a contract for our supply, but not our distributor, right?
Distribution is through the...
Yeah.
Area contracts.
Right. So, hopefully, we can have a better handle on where we're at. And then, of course, under supplies, we have fuel. Plus, it's hard to predict what we're going to need for fuel for next year. So, those are some of the things that we're faced with in the Five-Year Forecast. I don't know if you have any questions. I've tried to summarize it for you. I tried to also give you a graph illustrating with the levy. I have the levy still in there. Should the Board wish to go back and put it on the November ballot, that decision would be...the first resolution would be passed at the June Board...at the June Board meeting. And then, of course, then there's a second resolution after the county auditor certifies to proceed with that levy. I don't know if you have any questions or...
Well, let's get the motion on the floor, and then if you have any questions, you can certainly address those to Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Five-Year Forecast for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I had a question on the funding. Were you surprised when it was actually put into place? Or was it pretty much what you expected, the CUP Patterson funding? Or was it better than what you thought?
It kept changing. It kept evolving and changing. But, yes, I think that if it follows through, it's becoming more fair. The only...we...there was some supplanting going on, too. You know, we're not allowed to supplant, but there was some supplanting going on where, under Student Success and Wellness, we were getting $1.1 million. And then it was dropped down to $500,000 because it's no longer driven by socioeconomic need. It's driven on a per pupil basis strictly across the state now. So, we lost where districts that have the power to generate more wealth gained. Some of the Indian Hill gained, Sycamore gained, but districts like Mount Helfie, Winton Woods, we lost. So there was kind of a shift.
The student socioeconomic status did not change?
No, the funding changed on student success and wellness. So, but we still will get additional funding of about $1.6 million.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Are there any questions before I ask him to call a vote? All right, with no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the Reports of the Superintendent for School Reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Okay, Dr. Johnson, and Board, all of the parties are over. All of the students are happy. Everyone is at home, and things are looking good. But I would like for...and you can do it right at your seat, Dr. Martin or Dr. Ragland, just to give an idea where we are with summer school. We are ready?
Yes, we are ready. We have roughly enrolled over 200 students in grades 1 through 6. So, we are definitely on target, similar to how it was filled in last year. So, we're excited about the excitement to come to learn additional during the summer.
Very good. Dr. Ragland?
And similarly, at the middle school, we have over 100 students enrolled. Some students are enrolled in enrichment only. Others will be taking both academic and enrichment. Those students meeting academics were decided today. And there are about 87th and 8th graders for academics identified, so they will be taking courses that they need to recover. We have about 100 students right now at the high school. Those numbers at the high school can fluctuate because it's not based on seat time. So students can start, and hypothetically, they finish when they finish. So as fast as they want to work and move through it, they can start on the 6th and be done in a week or two, and/or start a week later and be done in a week. So, it's based on personalization and what they need. And so, I'm proud to say that, you know, the middle and high schools are prepared to give our students the experiences that they need to have in order to move forward.
Yeah, and what's a little different? We've had conversations. We pushed the teachers a little bit, letting them know that even... I know Dr. Ragland just gave it. The kids can finish as quickly as they get it done, but we're not letting them accept Ds as part of their grading process because this will actually hurt their GPAs later on. So we're talking about staying in the summer session. We're really working desperately for As and Bs because that'll...you know, we've got to get our kids in the mindset if it's not just about credit, it's about the GPA that goes along with it because you will regret it later on if you do something different.
I have a question on the 1st through 6th grade. What kind of classes or what kind of... what kind of experiences will the students be engaging in?
Yes, they are focusing on literacy and math. So, the students will have an opportunity to... in the course of their day, they'll work with the scope of learning about the foundational pieces of reading. They'll also be able to work on some of the skills that they were given this school year and enhance those skills to be prepared for next year. So, they also will have an opportunity for enrichment. Those activities will be given within the course of their school day. So it's almost like a modified school day for the 1 through 6. So, just like they have specials throughout the course of the school year, they'll have enrichment, similar activities, the art gym, music... well, not music, throughout the summer session.
Yes, it is. It will be music.
Oh, yes, there is music.
That's why I wanted...I was hoping that... because we kind of lost something over COVID's period of time, and I was hoping that... We could augment some of those programs and get kids up to, you know, where they need to be.
And even in the COVID reports, it really does ask you to enhance your summer program by offering music courses. So, we've actually been able to do that.
What kind of music would it be, then, do you think?
They're enjoying the drums.
It's a percussion 101 class taught by, actually, Mr. Brandon Smith. So, we're excited about that.
And then on the high school, do they have credit recovery? Or they'll have to go to enrichment then?
So, high school will have credit recovery. The middle school will have enrichment opportunities. So they'll have robotics, they'll have a STEM class, they will have crafts, they will have photography, writing. So there's a variety going on there as well. And they will have the option of enrichment only. So we have students who only want that, which says a lot that they want to be in their building during the summer. And then we'll have students who have the opportunity for two weeks for one course. So hypothetically, if they need their 8th grade math course, they could do that the first two weeks in combination with enrichment. And then the second two weeks, if they needed a second course, they would then have that course and then an opportunity for enrichment as well.
And finally, Ms. Wilson, teachers all secure and ready to go?
Yes, so you'll have...you've got a long list of teachers on the personnel schedules that you'll be asked to approve shortly.
And the funding for this?
Some of it is ESSER funding for summer school. Not ESSA, but ESSER. It's our school. And we are able to offer a little bit extra because of the federal funds.
And the other thing I thought was important is that our district knows that we've offered these additional programs. I know, maybe an opportunity for our public coordinator or community person to take some pictures or at least send it out to the community what's going on during the summer in our schools.
Drew Jackson.
Yeah, Drew, yeah. So, I think that's really important because I think our community needs to know what we're doing day in and day out. And we know what we're doing, but we think it's really important that the community sees that engagement as well, so...
Very good.
Is it too late for students to sign up if they're so interested?
No, actual registration closes on May 25th. But, you know, we'll still take students as they, you know, register, they call the school or whatnot. But ideally, it's the 25th for the purpose of transportation and the food services to have everything set up. So, but again, we kind of won't turn any of the way.
That was going to be my question about transportation. Are we offering bus services for the kids to get to the school for summer school? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I think you bring up some very good points, Mrs. Kuhn. If we don't tell our own story, it won't get out, you know? And it is a great program. I've talked to several other people that I know that are on school boards, and they're not having summer school. And I'm like, "No summer school?" Well, they said, "Just for credit recovery." That's the only thing they're doing. So, it's just basically for, say, ninth through 12th. So, it's really, really nice that we're offering it not just as credit recovery, but for enrichment purposes too. So, I think that, uh, the, the truth of the matter is, if we don't tell that story, no one will know. Because they think summer school is just for credit recovery.
But you know, Dr. Ragland mentioned the kid that's in credit recovery can actually get enrichment as well.
Enrichment as well, that's what I'm saying, that's fantastic. That is absolutely fantastic. And I love to see that the music and the arts are being added into that too, because that makes it fun as well. So, thank you all for, uh, what you do. If there's nothing else on that, 9.01, we'll move on to 9.02, which is the first reads of new and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, the, uh, as, uh, Dr. Johnson mentioned, these are first reads and, uh, board, you'll come back at the next board meeting to actually vote on these policies in June. So, the first one is policy 1616, administration, staff dress and grooming. Policy 2271, college credit plus. Please be real aware of the college credit plus program, um, when you guys are reading this, because once a young man is involved with college credit plus, once they're 18, they must be able, they, they have to enlist. They have to register for the armed forces.
As selective service.
Yeah, this is not something that we were aware of before, but their name goes into this, you know, catalog of names. It says you received, uh, the college credit plus opportunity, so you must have your name with selective services. So, just be aware. The other one is 2370, blended learning opportunities. Even though we're through, we're, we're phasing through the pandemic, uh, blended learning opportunities are still out there for people to participate in. We don't have a blended opportunity right now, because all our kids are face to face. Uh, professional staff's dress and grooming, which is 3216. 4216, staff dress and grooming. 5511, uh, dress and grooming, and then 5511.01. Uh, Ms. Kuhn, you, you had some questions about 5511.01?
About school uniforms?
Yes.
It, it looked like there, everything was blocked out, so I wanted to ask what the, what this meant, this particular policy.
Okay. So, one of the, uh, things, uh, I'm not sure if you remember, Dr. Johnson or Mr. Birdy, uh, parents were really concerned about kids purchasing spirit wear and never being able to wear it, unless it was a Spirit Wear Friday, or you pay a dollar to wear something different. And we decided that, uh, well, actually, the board voted on it, uh, that, uh, spirit wear would be part of their uniform. Uh, having a spirit wear, a spirit wear shirt or something like that would actually make the situation more available. This is what she said.
Yeah, that's what I was surprised, because it didn't look like there was any policy per se.
Yeah, so, we're actually going to go back and look at 5511.01, since it's the first read, you guys read it. This should have been a short read, by the way.
Yeah, it's just a statement.
Yeah, because most of the things were stricken. Uh, but one of the things that we do know is, uh, if there are any teachers and administrators in the room, the teachers really appreciated it being spirit wear, because the white shirt, the blue shirt, the green shirt, they're saying that's all well and fine, but they would have preferred to have the spirit shirt, less kids having consequences for not having on the right uniform. So, this was really a good thing. We just have to now put it in, into, uh, language where the public would understand where we made the shift.
Right, I thought maybe it would just be added that you could wear spirit wear anytime, in addition to the policy.
You can continue wearing the regular, uh, attire, but the spirit wear would be added, that's already been added. I think it was, uh, revised in, um-
It could be revised, but it just looks confusing, like there's no uniform policy.
It will be, it will be, it will be taken care of. But remember, this is your first read, so you wouldn't even vote on it until you're, the next time.
Right. So, we'll have the policy.
Yes, you will have it updated.
It will be different.
Yeah, I'm aware of what it, how it was stricken and read. Uh, but it did give parents the flexibility that says, hey, we sell spirit wear, but you can't wear it. That may, that may nullize the parents, especially since we have a robust spirit shop. And I know one of the things that Dr. Johnson wanted to do when she first came on the board, why don't we have this whole spirited activity ideas? We want to see the sea of green and sea of blue everywhere we go. We're getting ourselves to that point, but I think having kids come in and wore your shirts or whatever, I think would be perfect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against that, I just, this didn't look like it had anything, so that's why I was asked about that.
What you were supposed to do is what you did, bring it so that it could be ready for the next read.
Shall we say it again?
Now let me know, Ms. Kuhn, you read that one.
I read it, I, I'm like, there's all gone, there's nothing left, so.
So, these will be, uh, they'll, these will come back to you on, uh, the next board meeting in June, so that you will have an opportunity to vote, uh, of how you see it. All right, very good.
All right, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Smith, for, uh, answering those questions. If you have any other questions leading up to, before we get the final one, and it won't come out until the next meeting, please address that to, um, Mr. Smith. There are a total of seven policies, um, and this is the first read, it's just for information at this point, but we do need to be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting. So, we'll have eyes on that one and on the other six as well. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the facilities update, and, uh, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Smith and Mr. Denny, our executive director of business affairs.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Thanks, uh, Dr. Johnson, and good evening, board. Hope you're all well.
Yes.
It's summer, so, we're, yes, it is. We're getting, yes. We're getting geared up in our, all of our operational departments to engage in all the summer work. We take full advantage of when the students aren't present, to do all the deep cleaning and the replacement and repairs and all of those things. So, while that's getting spun up to speed, I just have three quick, brief updates on our, you know, overall facilities master plan. Starting with, uh, former Winton Woods Primary South, we're getting close. They're about to commence with final grading and then topsoil operations and then seeding. We're still also working with the Ohio, uh, excuse me, the Hamilton County Health Department on the decommissioning of the sewer, the septic plant. Uh, so, that's something that's a kind of a more involved process and it's taken longer than a typical demolition, so. That should be, uh, wrapping up soon. So, we should hopefully be able to get a certificate of completion in the next couple of months on that property, which would basically clear all that out. Moving over to the elementary school, the former Winton Woods Elementary on Kingsbury, that's behind that demolition's, I'd say probably got a couple of months more, more work as well. Uh, they're still clearing debris, they have to mill up the asphalt, they've started that, but it's still in process. And of course, they're leaving some roadways in place, so they can use them as the demolition progresses. So, I'd say that's probably looking more like end of summer for final completion, final inspection and those sorts of things. But, but those projects are moving. Moving to the intermediate school, the former intermediate, where we've got renovation, um, underway there, we're actually out to bid right now for the first phase, that's the HVAC, uh, replacement and the building envelope, the doors, door frames, windows and window frames, that's actually out to bid right now. Um, we're expecting, I think we have our pre-bid walkthrough tomorrow, bids are opened next month, uh, next Wednesday at 2:00. So, that's coming up, uh, a little over a week away. And then we'll have an idea of what the, uh, what the bid returns are and what, what the bids, uh, will be, and we'll be approaching the board next month with, uh, after vetting the particular contractors and having a recommendation in place to submit to you for your review and consideration. Uh, but that basically sums it up, a fairly quick update, that's where we are with, uh, the master plan and facilities update at this time. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
One question I have is, how many bids do you usually get per, um, job like that? How many do you look forward to get?
It's a great question. It does vary widely, we've seen. For construction jobs, we've been very fortunate, and demolition jobs, we've had like half a dozen to a dozen contractors. We'll find out tomorrow, I'll see who's really interested, because they'll show up for the pre-bid walkthrough. Those are the firms that are, are really, uh, in- interested in it. Uh, but I know of three for sure, so we'll have, I think we'll have at least three, um, bids coming in. I, I, the, the more the merrier, truly, the, the more, they all know who's involved, they talk. So, the more firms we have interested, the more leverage we should have as a district on pricing.
Sure, that's what I was thinking, yeah. And you said that the, at the elementary school, the demo's a little bit behind, um, but it's not over budget, it's just a little bit behind, or is it over budget?
No, it's not over budget, let me, let me make sure I'm clear. So, it started after the Primary South, it's the same company doing both demolitions, so they started at Primary South first and then phased their equipment and mobilized to the other site. So, they started later, it's going to take, you know?
Okay, I see.
So, it's not running behind, it's just-
Correct, it's, I made it sound like it's running behind.
Right, so it's not over budget, running behind, it's just not finished at the beginning of the summer or whatever.
Right, right.
Yes. Yes, it is. Yeah, we drive past there and there's nothing in it.
And those are co-funded by the state too, which is, you know, a big benefit for the district and our taxpayers.
All of our demos are, or part of the building?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Either covered, the cost either covered under, you know, with the bond and the state co-funded.
Sure.
Yeah, right.
So, Dr. Johnson, the window would have closed if we did not act on it, it would have been our responsibility. So, it was very important for us to do it in a timely fashion.
Right, right. We needed to do it within that window, so that the state, or FCC money would take care of it.
Portion of it.
Yeah, a portion of it, and, and locally funded money too. Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Denny or Mr. Smith?
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you so much, we appreciate it. It's always exciting to hear what initiatives and activities are going on and happening with the building, so, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is, um, the superintendent's recommendations for the personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor. All right, Mrs. Wilson.
Good evening. Before you, you have schedule A, uh, which is resignations, schedule B, support staff, I'm sorry, um, classified staff.
Certified.
Certified, I'm sorry. C, support staff, D, supplementals, E, leaves, and schedule L, which is a, um, unfortunately, we had a staff member that, um, passed away, and so, um, she was a beloved member of our staff, uh, Ms. Ames. So, if you have any questions, I would, um, be happy to answer.
Before, before you, before you vote on it, there's one piece of information. So, Ms. Wilson was able to give me some historical data, and I know that people kind of exaggerate who's resigning, who's relocating, who's terminating, or whatever the case may be. But I wanted to go back, uh, she was able to give me some information. We have the same identical amount of seat teachers that were transitioning last year than we did like this year, based on the resignation. So, there were eight last time, there were eight this time in the month of May.
Very good. Board, let's get a motion, and then we can ask her any questions that we would have on those schedules.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, if we have any questions for discussion, now would be the time to-
Sure. I do worry, I, I know you said for the month of May resignations, but they're, they're contracts in like through July, is that correct? Most, majority of teachers? Do you have some that are coming up in June, or is it a larger number than what you had thought? I know the, the, the whole condition of the country is, is very weird, so I'm not saying it's unique to Winton Woods, but I, I'm, I am concerned about this.
So, teachers have until, um, July 10th to officially resign. So, we could potentially have resignations all the way up until July. What we did with our union, because there really is a teacher shortage, I went to several job fairs, and there were more recruiters at the job fair than there were candidates. And I am not kidding, like it was, we were all shocked. Um, so, it's really an employees market, uh, and that's why, um, we, we asked our union to work with us. And so, we asked them for not necessarily names, but positions, so that we could get ahead of the hiring. So, our union was very cooperative, and they shared, um, positions early that we thought we were going to have to fill. So, we've been, uh, very aggressive. I'm hoping this is kind of the end, but I suspect there will be a few, I'm sure there are a few people out there looking that as soon as they get something, they'll probably let us know. But that's not unique to Winton Woods, that happens every year, and some people just don't like to tell you until they are sure that they've been board approved somewhere else. Yeah, but we do exit interviews with all of our, um, exiting teachers, and we get data from those exit interviews and use it to try to improve our retention.
Right.
Yeah, but I think Ms. Kuhn makes a good point. There are teachers all over the country that are saying, I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do, but it's not going to be this.
Yeah.
Uh, they've actually had a whirlwind, you know, if you look at the two years of COVID, you get the blended A and B weeks, and it actually just kind of did something to the profession, um, not just teachers, but administrators too. So, we need to just be on a close lookout about hiring the best and the brightest and keeping them part of Winton Wood City Schools.
Yeah, a couple of our, uh, teachers have indicated they're leaving their, their actual profession in their exit interviews to do other things, to pursue passion projects and things that, you know, that they want to do.
Things that make them-
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those are important, but as a business, and, and the school is, we invest a lot in our teachers, so obviously, we want that full investment back for our community and our, and our students too, because it's very, teachers are, you know, the cornerstone of what we do, and, um, we appreciate their hard work if they're out there listening to us, so, thank you very much.
Staff is the cornerstone.
Staff, I, I don't, I'm not excluding anyone, I don't mean to exclude anybody, but-
Because as soon as you say teachers, I'll get phone calls tomorrow saying they didn't even mention us.
IT, okay, here we go. Transportation IT is-
Happens every time.
I don't mean to disqualify anyone's participation, I think that's all important.
I know, I just think that, you know, in our, in our work, we, we usually symbolize teachers and education, but it's a whole team of people that make the, the, the bus move.
No, I, I get it.
So, question, in the data that you get from, um, resigning employees, have you noticed a trend? Or is there anything that we need to be concerned about, or strategies that we can implement to make their recidivism lower, if possible?
Trends, there are some trends, um, and I'd be happy to share those with you, or Mr. Smith, maybe you could share those with you at a work session, I, because I don't want to misspeak, but there are a few trends, and what we typically do is, uh, when we have our administrative retreat, I will share that information with principals, and we, we do redact names. So, I, you know, so that people don't feel intimidated or, or sense, you know, they don't censor themselves. So, we redact names and we try to share it in a, kind of an aggregate form, so that, um, you know, people feel like they can speak candidly. So, I'll be happy to share that information, um, we can compile it and share it with the board.
And I just echo everyone, you know, your comments, Paula, that this is the great resignation, and we do know that people are, the literature says, you know, great resignation, people are leaving all types of industry for those employees of the Winton Wood School District. You are valued, we value your contributions, no matter what your official work status is. Every single person in the district is important and makes the work that we do and that we're able to help you all implement, um, go forth. You know, the 61 students with honors diploma or the 320 students that just graduated could not have gotten to where they were if it weren't for every single person in the district. So, thank you, um, I just want to say that now, because I know the work is hard, I know it feels as if you may not get the recognition, but please know that you are valued.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant, for making that point, because I was going to say something very similar to that. Across the nation, though, there is a worker shortage, you know? So, uh, we have, um, some really good teachers and professionals, um, that work within the district and as much as is possible, we would like to keep them, so, um. Anybody have any other questions for, um, Mrs. Wilson or Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Wilson. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the revised 2022 to 2023 district calendar. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, there was a, there was a necessary revision, Dr. Johnson, because we didn't have enough teacher days. Because, um, the teachers actually have been working with Ms. Wilson and teaching and learning, and they were, um, kind of asking, you know, some, uh, districts have what's called a fall break, and so, a fall break has been inserted, because that's a long time without having a break in between, uh, when you look at the months of August, September and going into October. So, if you look at your calendar, there's a fall break on the 13th and 14th, and so, we had to add two days on at the end. That's the only difference and adjustment in the calendar.
Where was the fall break?
Fall break, 13th and 14th of October.
October.
See it.
Yeah, and if you notice what happens, they, it's the fall break, the 13th and 14th, and then the 17th is actually a records day. We wanted to kind of give kids and teachers an opportunity that if there were any deficiencies, any grades that needed to happen, any makeup work, they, if you notice, on, um, October 18th, that is an actual beginning of second quarter. So, they can actually clean up everything and start the quarter very, very fresh and ready to go. And kids needed that, teachers needed it, so it actually gave us an opportunity to put it there. Uh, the calendar committee thought it was a great idea, along with both unions, and so, here we are.
Very good. All right, um, board, can we, uh, get a motion with respect to the, um, revised district calendar?
I make a motion to accept the revised 20, 2022, 2023 district calendar, as noted.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions? Mr. Smith did a very good job with explaining it, but are there any questions that we would have for him?
Not so much a question, but just a statement to note that the fall break is something that a lot of school district-
Not so much a question, but just a statement to note that the fall break is something that a lot of school districts have implemented. So we are being congruent with um other districts across the state with fall breaks. So that when you talk about being able to refresh or to get things together, this will allow all of the teachers, staff, and building personnel to kind of hit pause, come back refreshed, get records together, and present the best opportunity for our students in the second quarter.
Good point, Ms. Bryant.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. If there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, which is the resolution for the Juneteenth holiday. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, when I saw how long this resolution was, um, and I know that the, I talked to some other superintendents in the area and their resolution is very, very simple. It's going to be a national holiday. And I think that doesn't do it justice. And I know that uh, the original one that we first looked at, uh, Ms. Wilson did a lot of legwork in some historical referencing to uh, why this is such an important day. So I know she was just dying to come up here and read this resolution. So Ms. Wilson, can you come up, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
No, here he is, right here.
No, he's not kidding.
I'd like for it to be.
Do you want a written copy?
So I know, I know, uh, and I know, Mrs. Bray, I know you wanted to do it, just, it's okay. All right.
I do have a confession. So I'm African American, very proud of my heritage, but I did not know the date of Juneteenth. And so Mrs. Bray and Mr. Smith thought that this would be very educational for me. And it was, and so it, it made a whole lot of sense. And so that's why I think he wants me to.
Absolutely, so you can soak it in.
But the problem is, Mr. Smith, I did not bring my readers.
Okay.
So I apologize.
All right, this is how we work, folks. All right. The Wittenwood City School District Board of Education recognized the historical significance of Juneteenth, National Independence Day, known as Juneteenth, the June nineteenth federal holiday commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African Americans. Whereas Juneteenth originated in Galveston, Texas, where it has been celebrated annually on June nineteenth in various parts of the United States since eighteen sixty-five. The day was recognized as a federal holiday on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, when President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day into, act into law. Whereas Juneteenth's commemoration is on the anniversary date of the June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, announcement of General Order Number Three by Union Army General Gordon Granger, proclaiming freedom for enslaved people in Texas, which was the last state of the Confederacy with the institutional slavery. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation issued on June first, eighteen sixty-three, freed the enslaved people in Texas and all the other Southern succession states of the Confederacy, except for parts of the states not in rebellion. Enforce of the proclamation generally relied upon the advance of Union troops. Texas, as the most remote state of the former Confederacy, had seen an expansion of slavery and had a low present of Union troops as the Americans have a war ended. This enforcement there has been slow and inconsistent prior to Granger's announcement. Whereas although the Emancipation Proclamation declared an end to slavery in the Confederate states, it did not end slavery in states that remained in the Union. For a short while after the fall of the Confederacy, slavery remained legal in two of the Union border states, Delaware and Kentucky. Those enslaved people were free with the ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment of the Constitution, which abolished chattel slavery nationwide on December sixth, eighteen sixty-five. And whereas the Board wishes to honor the momentous day effective with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year by allowing eleven- and twelve-month employees opportunities to engage in meaningful reflection and celebration of the occasion. Therefore, be it resolved effective the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, June tenth, Juneteenth will be recognized as an official paid holiday for administrators, supervisors, exempt employees, and non-teaching Witten Woods employees who work eleven or twelve months in a year. And no summer school activities will be scheduled on that day. Moreover, when June nineteenth falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the holiday will be observed on the following Monday and witnessed therefore by, with the affix of our signatures, and this is for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, June ninth, Juneteenth as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? C, none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one, which is the Board of Education reports of the legislative report. Mrs. Kuhn?
Oh, I'll be, I have a question though. Is that on the new calendar then, Juneteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want, I just.
It was, I, I.
Okay, I was gonna double check that. Thank you. Um, I handed out, I had gotten some information from facts and a flash blog from the OSBA and also with the help of Mr. Smith, um, some important features that are going on legislatively. A few things that I thought were important, um, isn't necessarily legislatively, but the high school athletes had an opportunity that the, which is it, the Ohio School Board or Ohio?
Ohio High School Athletic Association.
They voted it down to allow for the, as an image, um, image likeness and um, some kind of um, uh, money that they would have earned from their image or from their success as a, as a high school student. That was voted down by Ohio, so we don't have to worry about that, at least right now, unless it comes up again for a vote. At the college level, they have this, so. So it's, it's, what is it, image likeness and name? Okay. Um, so that was voted down. Uh, I thought it was important too that um, there were, the other one that was important, uh, that this, that the federal government is giving some extra time to use. I believe that's the S R monies. And Rand, uh, Treasurer can, um, or Superintendent can elaborate a little bit more. It gives school districts some extra time to use that additional funding to cover expenses needed, which would be like the summer school program. That was S R money that was used, that was subsidized by federal money. Um, that's being extended. Um, the other thing I thought, and I think we already, well, may have it, but there was um, a bill approved by the House or passed by the House where it requires public schools um, to have a job recommendation of school counselors. Um, so I imagine that'll be a work that will be presented. Um, and then one other thing, it was kind of tied to teachers. Obviously, teachers are having a problem, but substitute teachers also are a problem for districts to have qualified teachers. And the state's aware of that need for a little while, and they have some legislation that helps um alleviate that problem for a little bit. So that can help school districts um solve that temporary issue. Was there some other points that you wanted to bring up, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, the American Rescue Plan, A R P, is also, you know, part of that extension. It's giving, what, what's happening, Ms. Kuhn and Board? They, the, the feds didn't just want people to just go spend the money haphazardly. And people were saying, I, I'm not going to be able to spend this money the right way because I can't use it for salaries, I can't use it to extend contracts. It's short-lived, it ends in twenty twenty-four. So there were groups that were saying that this should be, go, go beyond September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And so the state and the feds granted saying, listen, if you send your reply in and send what you're going to use your money for, we could possibly extend it, but it's not a guarantee. So we wanted to make sure that we um did it the right way. Uh, Mr. Seymour has been managing the dollars very, very well with teaching and learning. And uh, I think the dollars are flowing the right way in order to make sure that kids are getting the benefit of the funds.
I think the only exception's going to be for building and facility improvements.
Because you couldn't get the building done. Yes, sir.
So what would the exception be or what?
Um, we have this in some other grants too, where you get an extension based upon what you, the use was for. So if you had budgeted previously for facility improvements and Mr. Denny wasn't able to secure it in time and it was in our budget, they might give us additional time. But I think some of those things like learning loss recovery and some of the other things we're doing, I don't know that they would extend that part of it. Is that? Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And I think if we have all of our funds spent, some of the funds that are, that are not spent and are not tied to facilities may have to go back. But we do have ours tied to facilities right now, some of ours.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there anything else that we need to know on the legislative level? All right, thank you so much. Thank you for that report, Mrs. Kuhn. Uh, the next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, which is the Great Oaks Career Technology Technical Center Report. And I know Mr. Birdy did send us some things in our email, but do you have anything to add to that?
Just real quickly, I did send something out in email to everybody. There was a Harry Snyder, um, the CEO of Great Oaks, did a weekly update. And he took excerpts from each student's address for each campus that they did last week when they did the, the senior ceremony. So um, I'd say take a look at those if you get a chance. And other than that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. I do like getting those so that I can kind of go over them a little bit more, so I appreciate that.
Dr. Johnson, I do have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Birdy, were you able to actually talk to any of the graduates, you know, at the ceremony? Or it was just so big, it couldn't happen?
It, it was pretty big. I mean, we, we typically take the, the board members that are there for each um ceremony. Like for Scarlet Oaks, there may, there were probably seven of the thirty-five board members that showed up for that ceremony.
And the next one.
Live Diamond Laurel. There was a number of, you know, people that showed up for each one of those. And then you took a couple of the programs that they offered and went through and graduated those students as they came through. We did have, I, I know there was one student, Sammy Ali, one of a Wittenwood student who did receive a couple of scholarships.
That's good.
Um, through, through, uh, through the, the program. So um, it was a good night.
Yeah, I just want, I just want the public to know that the, even though the young people go in transition to Scarlet, they actually do participate in our graduation as well. So it's not just there, it's both of them. That's a good deal. You get two for the price of one.
Yeah.
And they do own, earn a Witten Woods diploma.
Right.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thanks for that input. Uh, the next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, Board motions and recommendations, which is the Board of Education meetings for June through December is on our agenda here. So Board, we need a motion to approve this revised twenty twenty-two Wittenwood City School Regular Board of Education meetings for May through December. Mr. Seymour, do you want to add anything about that? Or have I said what enough?
I think we're just trying to clarify that all of our meetings are regular meetings. And uh, and we're trying to still be descriptive that some of those meetings will be work sessions and some of them are superintendent briefings. But public participation is welcome to meet any of them.
Exactly. Yes. Thank you.
Do we need to like read every date?
No, you could just pass the list and it will be distributed to anybody who's requested it through my office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Um, Board, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-two Wittenwood City Schools Regular Board of Education meeting dates for May through December of twenty twenty-two as revised.
I'll second.
Was that Mrs. Kuhn or?
Yes, Mrs. Kuhn, yes. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion at this time?
And just so the, the regular meetings that are televised are going to be here through the rest of the year at the South Campus. Just, and then starting in the next year, will we, or do we have an idea?
We have, we, it's usually six and six.
Okay.
So we'll transition back to the North Campus so that, you know, families, it's kind of odd, Ms. Kuhn. Some families are saying, I, I won't go here for a board meeting, but I will go there. I, it's kind of interesting.
We're not that far apart.
I know, but they just.
Well, I like having it in the schools because I want our community to come in the schools. And I think it's important, it's a great foundation for the Board to see what goes on in the schools. And I think it's a great backdrop. And I think it shows what we're here for. So I, I like being in the classroom and not in a stuffy boardroom per se, but, so I appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much. Um, if there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, which is comments from the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent and Treasurer. Mr. Seymour, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
No, thank you.
All right, very good. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, I would like to really thank Ms. Kuhn and, and Mr. Smith for sitting in on the pizza party. We've been using these, this room. And when we break this room down and change it, it's really someone's classroom. The kids voted to let us keep using the room for next year because they, they brought pizza. So I appreciate you guys standing in and making it work. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We do appreciate the board members' participation in that. Mrs. Bryant, do you have a statement that you'd like to make, comments?
I actually do. I have comments today, I'm super excited.
Good.
So one, I want to again congratulate all of the graduates from Wittenwood City School District. Um, it was my first graduation as a board member. It was wonderful. I will not look at the person over here who actually got emotional as her daughter graduated. And it just made me, I don't know, was about to tear up. It was a phenomenal experience. But it was wonderful. So congratulations to all of you. Um, also wanted to kind of say thank you to the Forest Park Democratic Club, who donated six hundred dollars toward the making of the wonderful ribbons that are on Witten Road.
Amazing.
So if you are a graduate of Wittenwood City Schools and graduated in twenty twenty-two and did not get your ribbon, please pick it up. It's listed on the um fence. It is just one of the highlights of my year to drive past and see those ribbons. It's just kind of that celebratory experience. But we would, would like for you to take that ribbon home with you now. Um, so please take it home. Um, and again, kudos to the Forest Park Democratic Club for contributing and giving back to the community and giving back to the um school district. So thank you very much for that.
Ms. Bryant, we may have to extend our fence, we're running out of space.
I saw that. It just kept going on and on and on. I mean, we're probably one of the, one, I think there's another community that actually started doing the ribbons after we did ours um in this area. So I think it's just a kudos to the community for them to see how many graduates we have every year in our school system. So yeah, we may need more fence, which is a good problem to have.
It is a good problem.
So again, congratulations to everyone.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Uh, Mrs. Kuhn?
Um, echo the sentiment, congratulations to our seniors. They did a fantastic job. Um, I also love to see the, the parade of ribbons down the way. It is a great um tradition that's established by the, our community. And I think it does instill the value of education that our community does prize. And it's very reassuring and, and I like to see it, so it's very fun. Um, I do want to congratulate all of our students for their work through the year and to be ready, rested up for the summer, enjoy their summer. I told them to read, Mr. Smith told them to play when we were talking to the third graders.
That Mr. Smith.
Yes, yes, yes.
I know, I didn't say that part.
Yes, yes. So um, but that's okay, there's a balance in summer, so we all have to enjoy the time off. So um, so I, it was very, very fun from a, from a board to be able to come into the school and to see what goes on in classes. So I enjoyed that. Thank you for the invitation, Mr. Smith. Um, so that's, and then go to summer school, since I'm on this theme of go to school. Uh, if you haven't enrolled in summer school, please call our district and get on board. It's a great opportunity. I'm sure it's not just hardcore school. I'm sure you'll have fun. And be ready for next year. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Mr. Birdy?
Again, congratulations to all the seniors and the graduates from Witten Woods, as well as Scarlet Oaks, which is where our Witten Woods students go. Thank you to the staff who helped to get everybody there, the parents, you know, grandparents, any relatives, anybody involved in taking care of the children that, that got them to that point. That's, you know, we appreciate everything that you all do to get the kids there. And uh, we're, we're, we're on board, trying to help do what we can too. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Smith, Mr. Brandon Smith?
As a formality, I will go ahead and say I will echo the sentiments of my other board members. But um, no, I actually appreciated the opportunity, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much. I love coming into the school and being able to interact with the young people. much. I love coming into the school and being able to interact with the young people. The third graders, there was a lot of energy in this room, and it looks a lot different than when we're here. It's a lot louder. But yes, I did tell the students to enjoy their summer, because I believe in work-life balance. And I want you to come in here and get those A's, and I want you to get out there in the summer and enjoy your summer break.
Absolutely.
So you could come back, revitalize. That's fourth graders, ready to get those A's.
You can say it quite like that, and I'll.
Of course.
Right now.
You know what this sounds like? This sounds like you are interviewing to be a substitute teacher, sir.
I'll substitute teach, Mr. Smith, when you get back in the classroom as well.
All right, sir.
Two Mr. Smiths back in the classroom. You know, I, you know, I adapt, I adapted my eloquent.
Yes.
Language to the audience.
That's true.
Third grade audience, thank you.
Okay, very good.
I enjoyed what I could here of graduation. It was a, it was a wonderful experience to be on stage this year. I participated in graduation many times prior to this, but I was on stage with my colleagues, and it was, it was definitely a lot of fun. Definitely a lot of fun. Looking forward to a couple more years of that. And with that being said, happy to be a Warrior today. Just happy to be a Warrior. Looking forward to more Warrior Pride situations and hashtag Warrior Nation. Back to you, Doc.
All right. We're on news.
TV show.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon Smith. That's our, we all got to experience the graduation, but I do want to say that there was that one very special recognition today, and Mr. Smith said that we'll bring it back, probably for the convocation, so that we can recognize those students who are published authors right now. And the Board would like to thank the district leadership team, because without building an excellent curriculum, that would not be possible. You know, it, as he said, Mr. Smith said earlier, it takes the entire team, the directors of teaching and learning, the executive team, Mr. Seymour, Mr. Smith, the paraprofessionals, the cafeteria workers, the janitors. It takes everyone to make this work, you know, and to make it work right. And everybody should be treated with respect, no matter what their job title is, because they're important to the team. How would you like to do something without your neck? It's part of the body, you know? So they all are part of the body, so.
Oh, Doc, that was, that was a powerful one. I don't, I don't think your mama said that, but that one was really good.
She didn't, she didn't say that.
The body without the neck. Okay, I gotta work on that.
Yeah, it just kind of doesn't work, does it?
I wouldn't know how to wear my chain.
No, you wouldn't. You wouldn't. You absolutely wouldn't. So we do appreciate your contribution. I can't tell you how excited it makes me to think that third and fourth graders have published, you know, something.
That's powerful.
It's just, it makes me all giddy inside. So anyway, I love to read and instill the love of reading in my, in my own children, in my own family, and the summers were spent in the backyard with books, on a blanket or in a chair, reading. So I think it's very important. And as I said earlier, readers today are leaders tomorrow, and that's really the truth. So I also want to congratulate the class of 2022 for their graduation and their accomplishments on their journey through high school. And a special congratulations to the 2022 Class Valedictorian, Stacy Surwa, and the Saludatorium, Winter Edwards, for their hard work and accomplishments. It was very, these ladies were very poised on the stage as they were in front of all of those people presenting, and that, to me, is a testament of the education they received at Wintonwoods City School District. So kudos to their parents, kudos to the guardians, to the people who instilled all of that. And we couldn't have done it without the district leadership team, putting together a good curriculum to make that happen. Mr. Smith for his vision, Mr. Seymour for his support in the financial area. Again, we've already talked a little bit about the summer learning opportunities. They start on Monday, June 6th. They run through Thursday, June 30th. It's for all grades. We already heard that enrollment is still open, so if you haven't enrolled and you're thinking maybe you want to consider it, enroll your student and just be a part of what's happening here. It's exciting. It really is exciting. And if we don't tell our own story, nobody else will. So having said that, those, that will conclude my comments for tonight.
Dr. Johnson? I'd like to give a kudos. Mrs. Jackson, putting on the honors diploma ceremony was, was awesome. I think you did a very, very good job.
Yes.
So we added video and music and some of the other.
Oh, yes.
Amenities that we didn't have before, and she's already told me, next year will be better.
You got some ideas cooking, huh? Good for you. Good for you.
Whatever he said.
Yeah. Well, you know what? That's how you grow. You assess what you've done, you tweak it, you make it a little bit better, and that's how you make, you know? So whatever we do, we should always be in the process of continuous improvement. That's just the way you should kind of think, and as an educator, that's the way I think. Even when my school doesn't give an evaluation, I give my class an evaluation and say, how did we do? What could I have done better? You know, so continuous improvement is something that as educators we always are looking to do, and to make the experience good and something that they can remember and carry on. So, having said that, we're at Agenda Item 14.01, and Board, there is a need for an executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider the sale of real property.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. We will now go into closed session, and I want to thank the Waycross community for your service in videotaping tonight's meeting. And with that said, we'd like to call the meeting of the Wintonwood City School Board of Education Regular Meeting adjourned. We're not going to come back into this session. We won't have anything else to discuss after this, but we'll adjourn.